Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent right at the moment. Councilmember Pataglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSATEN:4-6, that SEC notice having been published according to law, with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board at City Hall.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, the agenda, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, for the COW meeting on Monday, July 24th, first issue for discussion is the resolution for adaptive signal system Phase 1 and 2. Unfortunately for me, Pete Tenkate is here. There's questions that need to be asked, but basically, this is an agreement that started prior to my service that, for some reason, got shelved for a little while in reference to new traffic control support adaptive signals. And what an adaptive signal is, it basically is a smart signal that knows how many cars are there, how much time it takes for them to shift. So, back in the old days, you'd pull up a traffic light at 2:00 in the morning and you'd sit there and wait till it's cycled completely through. These signals are computer-driven and they're smart enough to know when to change, when to break the traffic, and move forward. So, there is an agreement for basically shared services between the County of Bergen and the City of Hackensack to update all of these traffic signals along river. And there's a list that's in your packet of all the streets that this will affect. So, to move this project along, I urge the Mayor and Council to approve this agreement and move forward. And if we have any questions that need to be asked on the finite issues, Pete's here to answer those questions if need be.
Okay. You all come up to the podium.
And, Mr. City Manager, if I may, before Pete starts, tonight, we have on the agenda a resolution affirming your support for the project. There will be a forthcoming resolution to formally approve the terms of the agreement between us and the County of Bergen. There were some negotiations going on to try and resolve a couple of items of dispute. My understanding, and Pete can talk about this, is that one of the major issues was resolved. So, once we have the revised language for the agreement, we will put that on for August 22nd. So, I'll turn it over to Pete. I just wanted to clarify what's being on for tonight.
Mrs. Von Rudenberg, if you have anything to ask him. Now would be the time.
Why don't we let Pete give us a...
Just want to give us a synopsis of what's going on.
An overview first, that would make more sense.
Yeah, let me just explain. In 2015, the City and Bergen County applied for a trap... As the City Manager said, a grant for a smart traffic signal system. And the grant included... It was originally supposed to be in two phases. Phase 1 was State Main Street and State Street, which the City would participate with the county on. And the second phase was River Street, which was solely the county's. Due to... We found out in 2016, when the cost came in, we made an agreement with the county not to include the adaptive signal portion in our bid for the conversion of State and Main. We went back to the state. The state agreed to refund it as Phase 1 and Phase 2 combined and not separate. So, the resolution tonight is basically a resolution of support to the City. The county passed a similar... And worse, on our end is passing one that says we support this grant. We continue to support this grant in the... For Phase 1 and Phase 2 combined and not being separate. So, that's basically a resolution of support. So, we're progressing with our project. As you can see, on State Street right now, the project's on schedule and moving nicely. All our infrastructure will be in place. And then, the county's proceeding to get their design of the adaptive signal approved by the DOT. And will be done. And then, they'll come in and put the adaptive signal system in the controller boxes and on the poles. And a command center could be at One Bergen County Plaza. So, the project's moving along as planned. And we are obligated to come up with a 30 percent share. The City has committed to that in the past. And part of that bond ordinance helps fund that part of it. We have extra money left in the other bond order. And so, we feel that the $500,000 should cover both the adaptive signal design and our portion of the share that we needed to show... That were never funded, anticipated being funded in the original bond order.
Okay.
Ken, you explain to us why we needed to fund an additional $500,000 over what we originally funded? Or do you want the CFO to speak to that? I think there was legitimately some line items that we had to add... That were added that incurred that additional cost? Because that's also on tonight for an approval.
Correct. The adaptive... When we budgeted for our original bond ordinance, not anticipated was a design fee for the adaptive signal of 200... I believe $258,000 for Jacob's Engineering, which was a joint agreement between the... Again, between the City and the county to design the adaptive signal system. And then, there was not enough money budgeted for the thought of that we needed to... $675,000 of our matching share was not included in the original bond order. Fortunately, the bids came in favorably. So, we were able to use some of the original bond ordinance to offset our matching share. So, it's basically the matching share and the design of the adaptive signal that weren't part of the original bond ordinance.
Wasn't there also a cost that we added or had to add in? Because we now have to use our police. We were hoping that the county police would...
Yes. We added some money in for the existing contract for police traffic protection. We were trying to save money overall because we don't... We're using a lot more flagmen, but there are going to be occasions, especially with the conversion days of conversion and some of the busy intersections. We're actually going to need uniformed traffic control officers, not flaggers.
So, are we required in this new agreement, are we required to supply the police... Our Hackensack police officers for both the city portion and the county portion? Yes?
For police traffic protection, yes.
Okay. So, not just for ours, but we have to supply them for both? And that was the agreement? And that's part of the additional cost?
That's correct. And the... As our attorney pointed out, at the next meeting, the actual inter-local agreement will be on the agenda for your consideration. What we ended up doing... What we were insisting in this in-living local agreement was that once the... There's two traffic signals on River Street at Passaic Street, and I believe it's Berry Street that the City owns. And after the adaptive signal, those intersections are approved. The county will take ownership of that. We negotiated that successfully. So, at least we got something out of this agreement. Cut our costs out.
So, with maintenance and, you know, someone runs into the traffic pole and you have to replace it for those reasons, it'd be beneficial to have the county...
Oh, absolutely.
Be responsible for those intersections.
Basically, River Street's a county corridor. We wanted to shed ourselves of any of that responsibility.
Absolutely.
We were negotiating that.
Okay, thanks. That's my question.
Leo, anything?
Yeah, so the line that they own by the City, Main Street and Passaic, State Street and Passaic, I mean, the City has to pay for that. They not really like... They are in Passaic, they not really county?
That's River Street and Passaic?
Main.
Main.
Main and Passaic.
That's county.
Main, Passaic, State and Passaic, and State and Central Avenue.
Yes. They are county... They are our signals on county roads. They have been in the county position.
So, we own it?
Yes.
We own it.
We're responsible for maintenance and...
We own it and are responsible. It's been that way. And the county has not relented on that. We were able to get successful with the River Street signals, but not the other ones.
Right.
But that's the way it is.
We tried. I can tell you that. We tried earnestly.
Yeah, I know there was a lot of back and forth with this. I know we met with the county back in 2016. It was a little touch-and-go there for a while on this project. You know, some of the cost was driven up by some of the bids that came in a little late, I think. But, you know, we couldn't afford losing this grant. And we, you know, we need the signalization.
Absolutely, it's the right thing to do.
It's the right thing to do, so...
But, I mean, we also bent over backwards in helping the county in a lot of their work when they were building their garage, et cetera. So, we were hoping for some support with police, especially in there, on the streets that are deemed theirs. I mean, it would seem like it would only be equitable for them to do that. And also, as Leo brings up, I mean, I'm happy we at least got two of the signals. But there are other signals that are on county roads that we were hoping that we could also...
Yeah. Because we do the street sweeping for free in the county roads.
Keeps the city clean.
The issue with the police is a common issue throughout the county. There's standard policy in every town.
Right. No, we went over all that.
Painful itself. Thank you, Pete.
All right, Pete. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Can I have one more question to Pete? Maybe he's going to go... Pete, what happened with the traffic light in Beech Street?
On Beech and Prospect.
Yeah.
About to bid now.
That's... Was awarded to another agent. I believe it's making progress.
The bid is out tomorrow.
That's it?
That's it.
Number 2.
Okay. Number 2 is the amended 2017 salary ordinance. The salary ordinance... This is being amended salary ordinance realigns the titles and salaries of employees and staff. There was no adjustment made to the salary guide in 2016. So, this is going to look disproportionate because it has changed quite a bit. One of the other things that I have noticed since I've been employed here, the City had titles for employees here that didn't match civil service. So, Jim and I have worked pretty diligently to make sure that, between the Personnel Director ourselves, that we start to match all of these titles. So, the salary guide matches the contract, which matches the salary guide and the employment. So, all of this is aligned. Because unfortunately, when these titles don't show up, then you get into an issue with civil service. If something's contested, then the person who is in that position or isn't in that position wants to be moved. So, I'm just trying to get this as close to as right and tight as we possibly can to make this work. So, this is the proposal Jim has prepared. Does... I don't know if, Jim, you have any comments or anything else to add to this? One second, please.
Yeah, you'll remember, in 2015, we did a comprehensive salary ordinance, one that included both contractual and non-contractual. And like Ted said, in 2015, we had said we're going to do this annually. But for whatever reason, in 2016, instead of doing a comprehensive salary ordinance, we did a series of small piecemeal ordinance changes where we added titles. The problem with that is that we settled a lot of labor contracts in 2015, 2016. And then, we didn't make the necessary adjustments to the salary ordinance, okay? There were a number of grievance disputes that were settled where individuals got increases that put them over the salary ordinance. So, like Ted said, what we're doing first is making... Well, the first thing we did was in the DPW contract, we made sure that the titles matched the salary ordinance and matched civil service. Now, what we're doing is we're making sure that the employee salaries match the salary ordinance. The next step for Ted is where we're going to look at individuals within the titles that they have to make sure that they're in the correct title. So, this is an ongoing process. And that's why this salary ordinance change looks a lot more comprehensive than it should look.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Number 3 is the RFQs. The RFQs were sent out for legal, for our attorneys and our pool of professionals, and also engineering. Myself and Mr. Kleiman, the City Attorney, have reviewed those documents.
Yeah, I mean, I did send out a list of the proposed appointments about 10 days ago for review and comment. City Manager, the CFO, and I have reviewed the various professional services. Not all of them are ready for appointment today, but we wanted to get the attorneys done, the auditor done, a couple of others. And at the next meeting, the balance of the professional appointments, including engineers, will be made. But, you know, we've reviewed them. They're in compliance. We did have, for most professional services, a fairly good response from a number of qualified vendors. Not every single one did we get as many responses as we would have liked. But, you know, we are comfortable with the appointments that we've made. And obviously, you know, we're prepared to explain if you have any particular questions about any particular vendor as to why the recommendation was made. We're happy to answer them here tonight. Otherwise, we'd recommend that you go forward, make these approvals. And this way, we can get the City's professionals in most case... Most of them are reappointments back doing work for the City that needs to be done.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I think it's important. I know that we're doing some secondary or backup professionals. And I think, you know, especially as we move forward in areas like redevelopment and things with tax cases, you know, we were finding we're getting ourselves, even with labor, getting into bottleneck situations because we were focusing on one particular attorney. So, I think you did a great job at making sure that when you assign these cases that you have, you know, qualified individuals that you can call upon to make sure that that doesn't happen as we go forward, so...
And one example, you said with redevelopment. Our current redevelopment attorney, everybody thinks he does a wonderful job, but he does have a conflict issue with a large property owner in town. And he was the only firm under contract for that. So, we found another firm that has a great deal of experience in this area. We, of course, checked to make sure that they had no conflict in this area because that would have kind of defeated the purpose. But they do not. So, we'll bring them onboard as a backup and to deal with that particular property owner and for other things that that redevelopment attorney is unable to handle. So, you know, that's the thought process in making these appointments.
I think that's a good one. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay. Number 4 really isn't a discussion item for open. It's for closed. It's a discussion over the JIF renewal with Outerstadt, which we will have in closed session because of contractual issues here. Number 5 is the Anderson Street redevelopment agreement. This agreement has been drafted by Brian, our redevelopment attorney. A lot of work has gone into this agreement. There's lots of parts and pieces to this agreement for the City. But basically, this will determine the purchase and sale of the property and the redevelopment of same for the Anderson Street area. So, to my knowledge, the Mayor and Council has received numerous communications written about this agreement. So, unless there's some individual question, I don't think we need to go through the whole chapter and verse, to be candid. But it is the Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC agreement. So, number 6 is the issue of Marvin Street parking. We had a gentleman that came in here that said that there was a business on Marvin Street that was monopolizing the parking that was available. And most of that parking was being used to this business for the customers for service repair. So, when the gentleman came to the microphone, I made a promise that we were going to look at this traffic... I should say, not traffic, parking condition on Marvin Street and do a two-week study.
Marion Street.
Marion Street.
I'm sorry, Marion Street. Sergeant Patrick O'Connor from our Traffic Bureau basically took the responsibility of this. And in his memo they sent back, he says to the City Manager, "As per the City Manager's office, it was requested that a Traffic Bureau conduct a two-week study of the vehicles that are parked on Marion Street. This issue was brought to the attention of the Mayor and Council at a council meeting, claiming that houses located on Marion Street do not have street parking due to two auto repair facilities utilizing the street for the customers and employee vehicles. Vehicles were noted that they ran for ownership in random times from 6:15 to 2:17 to 6:29 to 17. A total of 109 vehicles were parked on Marion Street during that time. As of those 109, 47 were residents of Hackensack. However, only 14 were vehicles from the area of Marion Street and Hudson Street. The other vehicles were... Three vehicles that were listed several times consisting of seven out of the 14 vehicles. Two vehicles were issued parking summonses for violations during that time period." So, the end result of the study basically says that their recommendation is that the officers that noted the three numbers did not observe employees of the repair facilities frequently moving vehicles on and off Marion Street. It is the opinion of the Traffic Bureau making Marion Street a resident parking sticker area would improve the parking situation for the residents and the street. Presently, the City ordinance allows for non-residents to park on a resident area for two hours. In some areas of the City, we have non-resident that attempt to move their vehicles on a constant basis to avoid being issued summonses. Additionally, if the Marion Street was designated as a residential parking area, the issues of repair facilities may be pushed to surrounding streets. So, the recommendation is for the City to develop a residential parking sticker program. And we're going to try that, as long as the Mayor and Council support that. However, it is my opinion, and probably the police department's opinion shared, that this is probably just going to move this farther out...
To all that areas.
To another area. But at the end of the day, parking is a premium in the City. And until we can figure that out, it's kind of like taking a concrete block and rowing out in the middle of the lake and throw it. Those ripples are just going to keep moving till we can figure this out. But in the meantime, it is an inconvenience for the residents that live there. They pay the taxes, the two repair garages. You know, fair is fair. We shouldn't displace our own residents that live on those streets. So, unless the Council has a different opinion, it would be my recommendation for us to try the residential parking stickers first and see how we do.
Are we just going to limit it to Marion Street? Or are we going to do maybe the intersecting streets?
Currently, the only issue seems to be Marion Street at this time.
Right. But they're going to move them over to the closest intersection.
Well, unfortunately, we won't know how far that problem's going to transfer until we try it. So, once we try it, I'm sure that we will hear it quickly from somebody else and then decide what we're going to do next. But just like a lot of these things, I think you have to take the first step on the journey and then we'll go from there.
I'm just suggesting we be a little proactive and just do, look at the, you know, like, in other words...
However you want to do it.
I don't know. I mean, I'll leave it to the traffic division. Everybody else...
One block around.
Like, just around, like, the one block around it, maybe, just to make sure that, you know, hey, I guess they could always drive away around two blocks, but it's not going to be as easy as just going around the corner and parking them all down. And then getting those people to come in and be angry about it. At least, do we pick... What do you think? You think that a block is fair, Leo?
What?
You think the one block around is fair? What do you think, Dave?
I would do at least the intersections for the block. In other words, here's Marion Street. Every street that crosses it, I would do with that block.
You're good, you're awesome.
In close proximity to the auto body shops.
Yes.
If it's approved by the Mayor and Council, I'll go back to the Traffic Bureau, have them touch up the streets that are going to intersect, and put this on the agenda for approval on the 22nd.
Yeah.
Because, think about it. I mean, we're going to end up doing it anyway.
Right.
Let's...
Do it right the first time.
Make them move the cars farther if they're thinking of moving their cars.
Got it. Okay. Number 7 is that we have a request from Doc Santucci, who states, "For the past 34 years, he has been the Bergen Family Chiropractic Center and the Chiropractic Center for the City of Hackensack." He wants to advertise on his website that he is the official chiropractor for the City of Hackensack. I said, "I do not have the power or authority to do that."
I don't see you.
So, I said, "I will put it on the agenda and ask the Mayor and Council how they feel about that." But I said...
Would you like me to opine on that?
Yes.
I kind of know what you're going to opine to.
I think there's some issues with that.
Yeah. I mean, you know, I...
There's a bid on it. I get it.
I think using the City's name, good name in furtherance of any commercial interest, regardless of how good they are, is a bad idea.
In case he do something that the City get blamed for.
Yes. My... In a legal... As a... To use a legal term, it's not a great idea. This isn't like, you know, we're not the New York Yankees where, you know, you have the official everything of the New York Yankees. But no, I understand where he's coming from.[1526.32]
But, no, I understand where he's coming from, but it would be, I think, an inappropriate use of the city's resources.
All I told him was, I'd ask. I kind of knew the answer.
Doc Santucci's a great guy, does a great job. He works, he has been working with city employees for a long, long time, but, you know, to do that would open a can of worms that would...
Exactly.
Leo brought up a good point. If somebody was injured there, you know, would we have any liability? And it's like us, you know, sponsoring, you know, Hackensack endorsed restaurant, like, you know.
Yeah. Not to mention which there, actually, you'd probably have to go have a bidding process for a concession to be the official chiropractor of Hackensack. So, there's also local public contract law issues as well.
Not in government, anyway.
Yeah.
Unless there's something else, mayor and council, this is my report for the COW meeting on July 24th.
Okay. This time, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Rock call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. At this time, anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk. You will have five minutes. Thank you.
Regina de Posco, Parker Avenue. I have a question on the Marion Street. The end streets are Hudson and River. River, there's no parking. Hudson is business. There's Broadway and Lafayette. Going both ways, one block? Look at it?
I don't know. Is I be allowed to tell you that if you ask me what streets coincide with that street?
I'm trying to picture.
Well, I'm telling you, that's what it is.
I'm trying to picture, but I can't, I can't think of it all.
Rivers and one at Hudson's, the bakery, right where the pastry shop is.
Right.
Okay? Hudson Street, Marion Street's along the side there, goes to River. Broadway's one block that way, Lafayette...
So, you're thinking Hudson Street might be affected?
Could be. Could be.
That would be a problem.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's where we have to let the traffic department look at it.
But, if you're going one block, I would go both, one block in each direction, because if you do it that way, they're going that way. You know what I mean? And then, then the blocks gets pretty sparse and far away after that.
And looking at what's residential. I mean, really, what it is, is you're trying to help the residential folks find a place...
But, River's not a problem. There's no parking there.
Right.
You know, Hudson is all businesses, really.
Yeah, I'm not even familiar with any cross streets that go across there. That's, there is nothing from River to Hudson, right? Is there any side streets there?
From River to Hudson?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, Marion is one, then Broadway, Lafayette, Water Street...
Henry.
No, but I mean off of Marion.
Oh, off of Marion, in, in between, it's one block.
Between River and Hudson, there's nothing.
No, it's one block.
Just one block.
It's one block. But Lafayette has a little side street off of it.
Yeah.
You know, just, I, my suggestion, just one block in each direction, because if you go this way, they're going that way.
They have to determine an area that sends the message and then gives the residents some relief at the same time.
Yeah. But you were talking about the intersections, and like I said, River is not a problem.
I wasn't sure whether there were any cross streets. I couldn't remember.
Yeah. It's just one, Marion's one block. Right there.
I mean, Marion is the street that, where the Passaic are lived?
Uh, Broadway, isn't he on, or Van Wettering is the next. He's on Van Wettering. That's two blocks from there. You know, there's Marion, Broadway, Van Wettering, going north. So, okay, just...
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak at this time? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Walker.
Rock call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Walker.
Rock call.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 77 and 78 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack is of the opinion that such